We're ready to go. Welcome, everyone, to our July meeting of the Tompkins County Council of Government. We've got an exciting agenda to get through here, and I will call the meeting to order. Are we in order?
Yeah.
How's everyone doing online? Good? You can hear us all right?
We hear you.
Fantastic. Everyone got a copy of the agenda? I take it and had a chance to look at it. And, um...
Excuse me, Dan?
Yes?
Do I have it correct that today's your birthday?
(laughing).
I just always talk the meeting out properly.
Well, it's, it's, yes, my birthday.
Happy birthday.
Cannot run from that. Is it against the rules of order to sing "Happy Birthday" to Dan Lea?
(singing) Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Dan. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, everyone.
(laughing). What dare we ask?
Speech about what is going to enter this new year. Distinguished people. All right, so we have amended the agenda once.
Boarding in progress. The best, the best, the best, the best.
Sorry. And so we also have an agenda item that I shared with everyone yesterday for consideration. It was something that the EMS, well, Emergency Preparedness Committee has been crafting for quite a while, and we wanted it to be considered at the meeting tonight. I'll just say briefly that it's consistent with the things that we've talked about previously in terms of being prepared for the growing burden on ambulance and first responders in the county. You know, we're fortunate that we're leading on this issue. We're really getting out on a topic that the state is just catching up on. You know, New York State has essential services legislation pending, a signature of the governor right now, to do exactly what we're doing right here in Tompkins County, which is to coordinate with county government to ensure that there's a plan. Proud to say with Corso and many others, you know, that leadership's occurring. But it got its genesis from this group, from TCOG, and a lot of work that's gone into bringing research and input from municipalities into this issue, so we could express what we're feeling as sponsors of many of the first responder units in the county. So this is just another step in that process. We want to emphasize in this resolution that the county should be looking to act as soon as possible, not unfortunately wait until fiscal year 2027 to take up this issue. We have a plan being made right now. I prefer not to call it a study because we were careful not to call it a study when we talked about having a consultant come in and do some work about alternative models for ambulance and first responders in this county. That work's going on right now. I believe it will get done in September or early October. That does not necessarily match up with the fiscal budget process of the county, which, you know, if we don't express right now that we'd like some seed money in the next year's budget, then that puts us out an entire, another year to do any real formal action on this issue. So I'm describing this now just to give you a little more sense of why we, we want the, the committee of a whole to discuss this today. We don't have to, we could vote it down, but let's have that discussion later in the agenda pursuant to the draft resolution that was prepared by the Emergency Preparedness Committee. So that's my ask, that we vote to amend the agenda to allow us to consider this, discuss it later in the meeting.
Where would you like to put it?
In the Reports section of the agenda.
Okay.
Is that a motion, Dan?
That's a motion to allow discussion of that resolution later in the meeting.
I'll second it.
Shall we?
Are there any objections to voting?
Are there any objections? Are there any objections to adding it to the agenda? Not hearing any? Thank you. And there are other voices that need to be heard on this topic besides mine, and that will give us a chance to let others weigh in later in the agenda.
Do we vote on that?
No, because, oh, we go ahead and vote.
If you like.
Sure, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand online. Thank you. All those opposed? Abstain? Motion pass. Um, Taylor, was there something else I was supposed to mention at the beginning here about?
(inaudible).
No? Okay. Comment from the, Joel, did you have something to add?
No.
Okay, good. I'll make sure I'm not missing anything. Okay, so I am, next item on the agenda is approving our minutes from the last meeting, May 22nd. Everyone got a chance?
That's not what I see. What about the rescheduling the meeting for September?
Well, that, I knew there was something else. That's why I looked to my right, and that's where she was supposed to say, yes, remember? We talked about this before the meeting. Yeah, so we want to have a discussion about rescheduling the time of the September TCOG meeting, and I believe that the talk was about having it start at 2:00 PM as opposed to 3:00. Is that correct?
Could we move into the preceding week, the 18th?
I have a couple other meeting dates available for consideration if you'd like to talk about those.
And that wasn't one of them?
It would be the 19th, from 3:00 to 4:30. It could also be the 22nd, or the 26th.
They like Fridays, huh?
Sorry, did you say Fridays?
Yeah, the 19th and 26th are both Friday.
That would work for me. I have a reoccurring class conflict with the 3:00 PM meeting. So I'd be open to a Friday meeting. Is that an option?
Yep, definitely.
I would prefer not, I would prefer not a Friday afternoon.
Well, that would only give us one other option among the ones that Taylor mentioned. What was it, Taylor, the 22nd?
Correct. It would be the 19th, the 22nd, or the 26th.
Okay, so those are all non-Thursdays. Anyone who's in the 19th?
Well, that's a Friday. Rod prefers not Friday, so.
All Fridays are bad, Rod?
If I'm the only one, let it be a Friday. I'm surprised that there's not other folks who might want to avoid a Friday afternoon, but if I'm the only one.
No, you are not, Rod. I also would like to avoid it.
You're not the only one, Rod.
Offices close at noon on Fridays.
Well, it will allow me to attend, so I'm a...
We could do it on the 22nd. I have a board meeting, it's not till Monday today. That's a Monday.
Monday to 22nd?
Yeah. Again, I know we're not going to, I have meetings all afternoon on the 22nd with the town, but I know we won't be able to find a time that everyone's available.
But you are available on Friday, you just don't like it.
Correct.
(laughing).
Well, I would say if you... Friday, I could do a Friday, that's just I would prefer not to because our office is closed, but I can do that.
Me too.
The advantage of Friday is that we tend not to have meetings on Friday, so, I mean, other things, so we're more apt to all be available on a Friday. How about the 26th, the day after we were originally scheduled?
Let's hold on to the 26th and see how we do. We'll all be in our Friday mood, sure, very smoothly.
Consensus for the 26th, then?
Motion is to have it on the 26th at 3:00 PM, presumably same time. Do I have a second on that?
Second. Mark.
Mark, yes. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? Wow, this is a friendly group today. Motion carries. All right, now can we move to minutes approval?
Yes, indeed.
All right. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any amendments, comments, objections to the minutes? I don't think so. All right, all those in favor approving the minutes, raise your hand. All right. Any opposition? No. All right, those are approved. All right, finally, we're moving into the report. Wait, wait, let's see, report from county administration. Well...
Yeah, okay, thank you. So we got our Commissioner of Whole Health, Jenny, and also Commissioner for Social Services, Brittany L., starting on Monday, so both two critical positions have now been filled. We appointed today Nick to be an interim director of Highway starting Monday, and the hiring process is ongoing, the position is now posted, so we're hoping to get that process also moving. Yesterday, we met with the legislators to go through some of the submission that has come in for the 2026 budget. So so far, at the moment, we receive all submissions. We've done a few meetings with some departments and some agencies, and the meetings, we have some few today as well, we'll have some lineup for next, tomorrow and next week, and then we'll start reviewing individual submissions and also discussions that has happened. So just to share with all of you very quickly, the submissions that we have received so far, so the first line is the 2024 budget actual, so we spent 20, 213 million, receive, so sorry, this is the mandate, I apologize about that, I just want to go through the whole budget summary here for you, one moment. Okay. Yes, so we, for 2025, this year, the modified budget, 236 million, revenue 179, tax levy net, it was just 50, 57 million. So 2026 submissions for maintenance of effort, 240 revenues that is being projected that we receive from department and agencies, 174, that give us a net of 66 million, that's basically tax levy rate. And also for new submission that has come in, 12 million, estimating $1 million in revenue based on new submissions, with a net cost of $11 million. So where that puts us, as we go through our review process, is that for us to provide the maintenance of effort and also if we're to maintain services and also a set new request that has come in, looking at the deficit of 22.1 million, that's about 40.3% of a tax levy, increase on tax levy, and also for maintenance of effort alone, if we don't approve any new request that has come in as of now, we're looking at a deficit of 11.1 million, that put us around about 20.3% tax levy increase, and the current task cap, as we have calculated that, is 2.7%. The reason is last year, we actually did 2.72% tax levy increase, so we didn't have any rollover for this year, so veritas of 2.7% as a tax levy limit for 2026. So just a quick scenario, for every thousand, for every 1% increase in our current tax levy is 549,000, and these are scenario numbers that we discussed with the legislators in terms of tax levy increases that potentially will need to be considered for us to be able to bridge the gap. As you can see with these numbers, none of them makes up the deficit amount of $11.2 million. So our job in the review process is how do we make changes in terms of increasing revenue projections and also decreasing some of the expenditure projections that has come in, and we have up to the next three weeks to figure that out so that we can prepare, propose, recommend a budget to the legislatures for consideration. So that's the work we are doing at the moment, and that's my report.
Thank you, Corso. That's pretty stark. Are you, can you take questions now?
Yes, yes.
What, what, what about the fund balances? Is that being used in the same proportion as the previous year, or is that being considered as a way to make up some of the difference, or can it even be?
Yeah, so for fund balance, what I, so last year, we ran a deficit. So we ended the year with about $2 million deficit in fund balance, so we actually used fund balance last year to balance our budget. The legislators also took a prudent decision to move some fund balance into the reserves for capital projects, for debt stabilization, and other, other essential need. That put us almost $19, $19 million in deficit, when you look at the revenue and expenditures that came in last, last year. So 17, let me just post that screen share again so that you can see, you can see it, one second. Where are you coming from? Okay, so the actual expenditures, including inter-funds transfer, in 2020, 2024 was 251.5 million, 1.6 million, revenue 232.1 million, that put us a net deficit of 19.4 million dollars. 16 and a half or so of that was actually put in reserve for our investment in capital and other projects. So where that put us on our fund balance position is, we ended 2024 with a fund balance of 63.4 million, less those funds that we moved into other fiduciary reserves last year, that put our adjusted fund balance at 44.1 million. Our current fiscal target is 25%, three months of expense cover, and that is 60.5 million. So that gives us a net of 16.4 million. So based on our fiscal policy, we're supposed to plan from this year for the next three years to build back the fund balance back to the 25%. I don't foresee us making that provision this year because of the degree of deficit in our current numbers. Either by the time we do our review with the department, we're able to make significant adjustment, that may be on the table for consideration to the legislators if there's a desire to build it back up, but we are looking at that stark difference in revenue and, revenue and expense projection for 2026, so we may not be able to be in a position to do that buildup back again. So if you look at, if we're looking at the taxes, the target amount, that means we do not have anything available to tap into to support 2026.
I think that's a safe assessment. Good luck with that.
Thank you very much. Baptism on fire for me.
Yes, at the budget retreat in April, there was talk about having a second budget retreat in July. Has that been held yet?
Yes, sir.
And if so, was there any direction from the legislature given at that time?
We met with, we met yesterday. The discussions points were, so earlier in the year, we had a budget training session with the state, and the state basically informed us that we usually need to work the budget the other way around, look at expense, look at revenue, look at where we land, and then based on the determine which will be a comfortable tax levy to decide on. So the legislators did not give us a specific target levy at our meeting yesterday, but there was a significant discussion around the comfort level and what they will be able to support in, as part of the proposed budget. So we have an idea, the comfort level, but we have to be able to, we're just going to plan the budget based on what the realities are, and hopefully we'll be able to present a proposed, recommended budget that is reasonable and can be considered.
That is not, it is, it is a public meeting because the entire legislature was there, meeting minutes are generally not kept. What was the comfort level? Does anybody have an idea as to what that was?
I would say the number of the legislators in the room, each one mentioned the number they'll be comfortable with. So there was no consensus on the number. The direction was do your absolute best to recommend the minimum possible levy rate.
Of course, I wanted to ask about the 19 million to the assigned reserves. Is that based on a standard amount put to reserves every year or a particular needs this year? I mean, because that's, that set you below the 60 million target thing, so curious about that.
Yeah, so basically, no, there's no set commitment around that, but it was a decision that the legislators made last year to put money towards our capital projects, around about, I think, I believe, about 9 million. They also put money toward the debt stabilization fund, which was about 2.7 million, also put money towards our self-insurance, they also put money into our workers' compensation fund, and also put money into a debt servicing fund, as well as the unemployment reserve. So these are reserves that potentially, based on issues that we are potentially going to face, we will be able to have that as a backup. One classic example is we are looking at a very steep double-digit increase in health insurance, and if the budget will not be able to support that health insurance increase, we'll be able to tap into the health insurance reserve if we have that to support the levy at a time. And also, we have the tax stabilization, we had an issue with that because it wasn't set up properly, that we are fixing at the moment, but that is something potential that can be used to stabilize the tax levy if we choose to do that in 2026.
Great, okay, thank you.
Just a quick question about the general principle of three months in reserve. That seems on the high side of what's recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. Usually it's two months, so I was curious how you, how this county picked three months as a number.
The State Controller's Office actually recommends three months, but, yes, but every single county treats fund balance differently based on their needs within the community. The idea was in an event of significant crisis, the turnaround time can go up to three months, so make sure you have three months' cover to be able to meet those needs. I believe the previous target was 18% before it was increased to 25. Some counties have it at 15, some 10, some have it as high as 30%. It's all about what they do, how available in planning, for planning purposes and other things. So it's a fund balance, the legislature can make a decision at any point which directly want to go, but based on some of the things that we face in government, it's prudent to make sure you have a good buffer in place for any eventuality.
Gotcha. It's been the consistent number for some time?
No, we just raised it two years ago.
Okay.
I voted against all that stuff. My answer to that, your question, Dan, would have been, some legislators are very nervous and just feel like we need a lot of money in the bank, and others feel like, no, we need to give it back to the taxpayers.
Yeah, I've spoken to the Comptroller's Office about this as well, and it just seemed higher than what they had advised, particularly for the town of Dryden or generally for municipal government, but it's up to the legislators, and that's, that's that. Any other questions for county administrator? Well, we really appreciate that level of detail from, from you today. I think that's very eye-opening. Now, we will move on to reports, presentations, and updates, and we're fortunate today to be joined by some distinguished guests, Roxanne Johnson and Isaac. Help me out here.
Walker.
Warner.
Walker.
Thanks for coming in person and, and bringing your presentation here for us, and yeah, we'd love to get an, an update on the inter-municipal organization.
Well, thank you for putting us on your agenda, giving us a little bit of your time today. We'll try to move briskly. This is our third one, so we're getting better at this. One of the reasons we wanted to go around and, and update folks on QUIO, the Kewa Lake Watershed Inter-Municipal Organization from now on QUIO, is because the members of the boards change over time. So while some folks have been familiar with us for 20 years, others may not know what we do for you and why you would want to continue to be a member. Also, we are having to increase our dues goal starting next year, and so we want to tell you about that and how that's going to be implemented, and we have a not brand-new, but relatively new watershed manager in Isaac Walker, and it's a good opportunity for folks to meet him. So, move on to the next one. I think most people probably know watershed is everything that drains into a water body, that's your watershed, and so that is the boundary for the Kewa Lake watershed that we represent, although up in the north-west corner, there is a little controversy and disagreement with the E.C. and us, and we're working on that at our August meeting, and I'll invite you to that soon. There are subwatersheds in almost every watershed, and they all have their own unique characteristics, and it's important to understand those when you look for what the problems might be and what the solutions could be. And the other thing that's important to note is that those boundaries that you see on that map, uh-oh, oh, no, I didn't get my timing just right, I got all eager about that. Do not line up with your municipal boundaries. So it can be really difficult for a municipality to address some of its water resource issues because it may cross boundaries where the sources or where the impact is and, and be outside of your authority. One thing that QUIO brings to the table is the fact that we represent all seven counties and 50 municipalities, and we bring that watershed perspective to the table, so we can more easily help you work with your neighbors, make some kind of multi-municipal or even multi-watershed project application for you, and, and it's just more efficient to have one person who's become familiar with the landscape and the economies, the grant funding changes, even how you get them, you know, get them applied for, the different mechanisms, rather than having every single municipality have to do that, that work individually, or maybe go hire engineers to design a solution. So that is the major thing that membership dues support, is the watershed manager and his ability to help towns through that, and it is a way more efficient way to get that work done. We do rely on, thank you, we do rely on a few guiding documents to, to show us where the problems are and the most appropriate solutions. One is the Restoration Protection Plan, which QUIO developed originally back in 2001, was updated in 2017, and it'll be updated again in the next few years. It's all-inclusive about water resources. Then there's DEC's HABZ Action Plan and the Kewa Lake TMDL, both of those focus on reducing phosphorus. QUIO was part of the review team for the HABZ Action Plan. We're going to talk about the threats very briefly, I'm not going to go over them in detail, everyone's aware of what stormwater is and localized and larger-scale flooding, and probably the climate change impacts and how storms are more severe, our infrastructure isn't built for that. But the thing, the thing to note about the threats is they're generally happening on a larger scale than any individual municipality again, so it becomes something that you really can't tackle the real, the real cause of the problem, but you are... but you are suffering localized impacts. So this is another place where QUIO is really helpful, because Isaac can help you find some funds to help with some of the infrastructure damage or changing out some things for more resilience to climate change. At the same time, we are working with the state legislators, we are working with the regulators, talking to them about proposed policy or, or regulations, and bringing that municipal perspective to the table and trying to craft them so that they work better for us locally. So you all know about the HABZ. There's still a real problem. The bottom two pictures were taken in the second week of July. And then the next one is about invasive species. So as an example, QUIO is on that task force where we're routinely in, in conversation with the PRISM, the Partners for Regional Invasive Species Management, and D E C. And I think I'll turn it over now to Isaac to talk more about some of the detailed work that he's done and can do for, for your municipality.
Yes, thank you. So I'll start off here with highlighting some projects from 2024 that we worked on. The first one, and one that had been on the list for QUIO for a long time, was a salt storage facility for the town of Covert in Seneca County. We were able to secure a Water Quality Improvement Program grant from the D E C for this, and it is currently under construction. So that's good news there. A second project that we worked on with some of our partners at the PRISM, as Roxy alluded to, was a hemlock-willy delged treatment in state parks. So it covered four state parks, two of which were in Tompkins County, one at Robert H. Treatment, and the other one was Buttermilk Falls. I acted as quality assurance for this project. And then we also hosted a site visit where people could talk to the actual contractor doing this treatment and ask their questions. And that was, we did that in November, right? I don't know why I ask you. And then a larger project that we're working on still today is a road ditch assessment in Seneca County. So this was a planning grant secured by, really, our, just one of our sister organizations, the Seneca Watershed Intermunicipal Organization, to assess the road ditches and culverts in Seneca County. As Roxy alluded to, not all of Seneca County, because part of it is not considered in either of the watershed. It's part of the canal watershed. So it, there's kind of a V in the middle that doesn't get, that will not be assessed as part of this. We're hoping to also partner this with Tompkins County's road ditch assessment and see where we can, you know, build a larger map, hopefully. The, the next phase of this project will be to apply for implementation dollars to actually go and fix the ditches and culverts that we find to be in disrepair or failing or what have you. Again, Roxy alluded to this, too, kind of talking about, you know, some of the committees and such that we're on, but offering municipal representation on various committees. Probably the biggest ones are the, the Water Quality Coordinating Committees at the county level. In Tompkins County, that would be the Water Resources Council. But they're all called different names around the watershed, but they do basically the same thing. We also do outreach and education. And so the last two Mayes in 2024 and 2025, we offered trainings at our monthly meeting that would give attendees a certificate of attendance. If you were part of a planning board or a board and you needed continuing education credits, you could then submit, submit that certificate for those credits. And the 2025 work plan, this is more general, so you can read the screen, but I'm going to talk about some of the stuff that we're actively working on that's more concrete. So one of the projects, and the bigger one, and some of the people on here know about this, this project, but we applied for another planning grant to do some work designing stormwater systems for the Kewa Lake watershed. There's, in the town of Lansing, and then also in the city of Ithaca. These are all low-impact and low-cost and small footprint sites so that we don't have to go through the permitting process. And this is set up the same way as the, the ditch survey is, in that we'll design and plan in this grant, and then hopefully we'll go back for implementation funding to actually implement those projects, you know, in the next couple of years, once we're done designing them. And this is also another partnership with the SUIO. So this covers parts of the Seneca watershed, too. And you can see here is some of our larger priorities in, really, this is carried over from a number of work plans. We focus on generally the same broad topics from year to year. I think that's it. So I'm going to turn it back over to Roxy for the dues update.
So we'll, we'll get back to our version of the budget update. So in 2022, we launched a new fair funding formula. We had been unable to support a watershed manager for a number of years, and that left this watershed behind on being able to access grant monies. And so we, we came up with this new formula. It's based largely on what Cannon-Daggle Lake does. It's sort of your presence in the watershed, your, your proximity or an amount of lakeshore frontage. And those are sort of static numbers. The main things that change over time are your population density and your total taxable value for your municipality. We looked at two different goal endpoints, and one was 90,000, one was 130,000. This is going to be a significant change from our original dues of $900 per each municipality. So we landed on the, the smaller amount as something, you know, more attainable. Here we are down the road, not too far, and we are no longer meeting New York State minimum requirements for non-exempt employees. This isn't, this isn't the salary. This includes, you know, benefits and also some travel and, and, and space requirements. So we're no longer able to actually, again, actually afford a full-time watershed manager if we don't make a change. So we looked at the funding formula. We think it's good. So we've just adopted that higher number of 130,000 that was originally looked at. The dues are split, one-third for the counties and two-thirds for the city, towns, and villages. And so you can see on the next slide how the counties break down for their third of the cost. And then you move on, you can see all of the, the city, town, and villages in Tompkins County and what those dues would be at the 100%. So three years down the line, 2028. So we're doing a phased-in approach at the new level of 130,000. So everyone should have received a letter that gave you this, these numbers for budgeting purposes. And if you didn't, let me know, and we can get you those numbers. Most of these increases were actually kind of small to moderate. There are a few that are large, and again, that's just based on how your population and taxable value has changed between the, the years. So the last thing I want to say is, so what, what can municipalities do? So if you're a current member right now, thank you very much for that. Please do maintain your membership. It's really important, and it really is an efficient way to use your tax dollars. If you're not a member yet, and there are a few in Tompkins County that haven't joined, please reconsider. And we're happy to come out and give you a presentation and talk more specifically with you about what your needs are and how we can help you. And really, the easiest way to recoup your membership dues, submit a project for Isaac to write a grant for you. And with that, thank you. We'll take any questions.
Thank you, Roxy. Thank you, Isaac. Any questions from the group?
Yes.
So just to clarify, the increase in dues is solely for purposes of salary and, and staffing?
Not 100%. I'm sorry. In my, in my effort to be more brief, I've cut out some details. A lot of it is about increasing the salary so that we are not only able to meet the required minimums, minimums for years to come, but we're also retaining good staff. It would not be efficient for us to hire people and have them get trained and leave. Also, we do need some administrative help, and we'd like a little bit of money to, to do that with. We would also like to have just a very small fund for things, what we often think of as soil and water conservation districts. They'll often have projects that they can, they could do if they had the in-kind piece that they need. And for a homeowner, it's often on private land, but that may be important to the overall picture for the municipality. It may be like $5,000, which is not so bad for a municipality or an organization, but it's a lot for an individual. So we'd like to have a little bit of funding like that where we can help projects, you know, make it forward. So it's all three of those things.
Understood. And thanks for, thanks for clarifying that last point.
I have a quick question for Isaac. So does that county road assessment include town roads, village roads?
Yes. Yeah, it does. There are a few villages that are left out simply because this was funded by Department of State and through the L W R P program. And so like, the village of Interlaken is left out of that because they do not touch the water.
Right, right.
But most of the villages, at least around the lake in Tompkins County, count for that. And I don't know, that was not for Tompkins County Soil and Waters Assessment. So I'm not sure if any were left out of theirs.
Mark? Great, thank you. I, on the ditches, that's great that you're working on, on ditches. So you're assessing culverts in need of repair. And so, does that work, I guess, a couple of things. Does it address reducing, reducing flow of ditch water or disconnecting ditches from the landscape or anything like that?
It could in the right scenario, but mostly we're looking to actually fix the ditches so they transport water in a, you know, environmentally friendly way. So that could just be, you know, it could be as simple as this ditch is barren and eroding. We need to vegetate it to slow that water down and hold it on the landscape better. You know, there's a multitude of things that, that we could do.
Great. Any, are retention ponds or areas ever employed? I know that's more difficult, but...
Probably not as part of this project. I mean, it'll be on a case-by-case basis, right? And soil and water is coming behind us in the survey, and they're actually doing the assessment using a tool that we built. Yeah, that would be, that's a bigger lift, right? It's certainly a lot more money than just the culverts. But if there was a need for one, we would definitely look at that. And that may not be part of this next ask for implementation dollars. You know, that might, that might be a separate grant that we would apply for then.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Anyone online with questions for our guest? I can confirm that HABZ are a problem. I was in the middle of the lake last night, and I could see them way up past Tugannic Falls. It was pretty surprising. So everything that we can do to study the health of the lake and try and improve it, I think is, is a good thing. All right, thank you. We're going to move on now to our next presentation. We have with us Claire Walsh-Winsler, who's the Director of Food, Agriculture, and Land Use Policy with Environmental Advocates of New York State, which is a statewide environmental advocacy and research organization. I've followed their work for decades, and it's just fantastic that we, we have someone like Claire who spent some time in Tompkins County, too. I think she might have moved here.
New resident.
New resident.
Four years ago, new resident.
Lucky us, we have a statewide advocate expert living amongst us on this topic and many others that we care about. And, you know, with Environmental Advocates, we've got a few Tompkins County and Cornell connections in the leadership of E A New York, and I think that just suits us just fine. So thank you, Claire. You, you have some slides to share about, about forever chemicals and, and things we might not have thought of in terms of how they are regulated in New York State and how they might be getting into our food system, and how we can protect ourselves better.
Absolutely. What is the best way for me to get my slides on the screen?
Do we have them queued? Can you pull up her slides? You could just say...
That'd be perfect. Thank you, Taylor.
I don't think she was expecting that, so thank you, Taylor, for adapting.
We appreciate it. I can introduce myself more, and I'm really excited to be here with you all today. And thank you so much to Dan for inviting me, both in my role, like Dan was alluding to, as Director of Food, Ag, and Land, you said, E A N Y, but also as an Ithican, as a homeowner in Tompkins County. And today, I am talking to you about a topic you might not have heard of before. It's around sewage sludge, also known as biosolids. And I do have some slides, but I'd love for this to be a conversation as well. Some of the details can be pretty technical. And so anytime anyone online or anyone in person has questions, please interrupt me, raise your hand, whatever makes the most sense.
Okay, you're on.
Perfect. All right. So as you can see, my slide title is Protecting New York's Farmland, Food, and Drinking Water from Toxic Sewage Sludge. And has anyone heard of the issues around sewage sludge fertilizers or biosolids, anything like this before? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, folks are familiar. I actually thought it was advantageous that I was presenting today with QUIO, too, because it affects so much of the watershed and our land here as well. Next slide, Taylor. Thanks. Do you mind going back one? Sorry. There we go. So just for anyone who is unfamiliar biosolids or sewage sludge, this is for municipal systems. When all of our waste from our household septic systems and industrial waste goes together into the municipal wastewater facility, it's dewatered, and then that water is considered effluent, it's processed, and then it's deposited in a permitted way. And the sewage sludge are the solid parts. And we have for decades been trying to figure out the right thing to do with it. Until 1989, it was dumped in the ocean. Then a federal law said that this was really bad for our ocean health and our ecosystems and our fisheries and all of that, and so banned it. And so since then, we have been doing a combination of landfilling, incinerating, and applying to farmland. And originally, 30, 40 years ago, folks thought that this farmland option was an incredible solution, right? They call it a beneficial use. It is rich in phosphorus and nitrogen, which regular fertilizers are as well. But unfortunately, because it contains toxic industrial waste, it also contains a whole lot of other things. Next slide. So I put a couple headlines. You know, we are learning a lot from our neighbors in the Northeast on this issue. Maine is the first state to take action on these sewage sludge products. Next slide, I think that will be most helpful. There we go. So here are some of the contaminants of concern within this, this sludge. We have industrial solvents, microplastics, heavy metals, antibiotics, antidepressants, antifungals. And kind of the, the big kahuna here is the PFAS forever chemicals. Are folks familiar with this class of chemicals? Yeah. And so as you know, PFAS chemicals are really scary. They're linked to all different types of cancer, to developmental delays in children, to cognitive decline in older adults, a whole slew of health chemicals. There are chemicals that we see things being waterproofed with to make them more slippery. So think your non-stick pans, your water slicker jackets, anything that makes something more waterproof. It's, and you're not in a state where PFAS chemicals are banned. It's likely that PFAS chemicals are used. So these are really dangerous, and there's measures at the statewide level to ban them in products. One just passed the legislature to make sure that they can't be in menstrual products. There's other proposed measures, measures from cookware to clothing. Food packaging was removed a couple of years ago, but it's slow-going because honestly, industry really wants to continue to use these really toxic chemicals despite the fact that exposure to them is really detrimental to our health. So, next slide, Taylor. So there's a lot of kind of technical details in this space around sewage sludge, but one of the most important things I want you guys to go home with is the fact that this is being applied to our farmland as a way to, as a way to get rid of it. We don't have a lot of good places to put it. We often landfill it. And so we're putting on our farmland as a way to kind of have a waste source go away, but it is toxic and contaminated. The way it's regulated, there's Class A sludge and Class B sludge. Class B sludge is when the land application itself is permitted by the state, and Class A sludge is when the processing. And so the important part here is we know that in Tompkins County, thankfully, there's no Class B permits. So right now, there's no sludge being, coming from the state and being spread, but the Class A permits because the processing is permitted. We really don't know where those products are coming from. And we see contamination events from across the state. There was a really notable one in Albany County this year where there was Class A products coming from Massachusetts, being spread on farmland in Albany County, and contaminating hundreds of wells and the municipal water for the town of New Scotland. So not only are we dealing with our toxic contaminated sewage sludge fertilizer, we're also dealing with other states. Like, I know. also dealing with other states. Like, I know, like I alluded to before, Maine is a state that's taken really first action on this. They've banned it statewide, and so they've set a real path to see what we can do statewide in New York as well. Massachusetts has a pending governor's signature ban. Connecticut is considering bans. And so the more of our surrounding states that pass this legislation, the more, they still need something to do with this, right? And they don't want to pay to landfill it. So they are going to spread this more into New York State. And so, like I said before, we have our toxic sewage sludge to deal with, and then we have our neighbors' toxic sewage sludge to deal with. Like I said before, the good news is that there's no Class B permits in Tompkins County, and we ourselves do not do this with our sewage sludge. We landfill it in Geneva. Again, I work for an environmental organization. There's lots of concerns with landfills, but from our perspective, the direct contamination of our food, soil, and water sources is the worst possible option here. Let me see my other questions. Does anyone have any questions so far?
So just to clarify, it's the industrial byproducts that are making it a problem, right? It's not the fact that it is sewage-derived, or is that also part of the problem?
It's a good question. So like I said before, there's a variety of contaminants in there. The pharmaceutical drugs come from our toilets primarily, people who still flush their medication. Some of the heavy metals and microplastics also come from us, but primarily, this is the industrial waste. That's the source of PFAS chemicals and the industrial solvent. So while there are some contaminants of concern that come from our waste, the fact that New York State's historic sewage system and the way our waste is processed includes industrial manufacturing, and there's not a real clear pathway as a way to derive that, because, you know, we'd worry they'd dump it somewhere else if it wasn't just a part of the municipal system. It's really the industrial waste that has the largest contaminants of concern.
Understood, thanks.
Who permits Class A and Class B?
The Department of Environmental Conservation. So they have a policy that technically regulates PFAS in biosolids, but it's at 50 parts per billion, which is a very high amount of PFAS. The federal drinking water standards, which, you know, it is looking like the Trump administration will roll back, are at four parts per trillion. So that parts per trillion versus parts per billion is a shocking difference between in terms of the amount of contamination. So they'll say they're regulating it, they're looking at this, but there's no safe level of PFAS. Even very small, low concentrations of PFAS are highly toxic to human health. So while these, another thing I actually should add is that PFAS chemicals bioaccumulate as well. So they don't kind of just pass through, they exist forever, and they build up. And so one of the concerns with the land application of these sewage sludge products is that they stay in the soil, and then they get sucked up in the soil into plants. Right now, it's primarily spread onto feed products, so corn, soy, wheat, that sort of thing. But then when it's fed to animals, like cows and other types of ruminants and livestock, then it builds up in their meat and their dairy. And so in Maine, this became a real political issue, to be honest with you, when milk began to be tested. And while there is some testing underway of soil, we haven't begun to test food products in New York, so we don't truly understand the ramifications of these bioaccumulative chemicals in our food supply. And so I'm really excited to talk to you guys here today because right now, we don't have a major PFAS concern in our municipal drinking water. We don't have a large amount of Class B sludge being spread here. Like I said, we aren't 100% sure about the Class A products, and we don't do this with our sludge. And so one thing we're looking to counties to do while we're waiting and fighting for state action is to protect our existing natural resources and water supply. And yeah, we'd love to dig more into that if you guys, I know we still have more questions, maybe.
If you don't spread the sludge on the farmland, and you don't put it in the ocean anymore, what do you do with it? Where will you recommend it go?
Yes, so there's not a perfect solution here, I would say. I think it's a harm mitigation measure. Right now, there's a lot of areas like Tompkins County that are landfilling it. And so while landfills are imperfect, there's leachate concerns, there's methane emissions concerns. We do have covers and liners and leachate capture systems that we need to continue to invest in. But again, in contrast to our direct contamination of soil, water, and food, is a harm mitigation measure. And so we think that there needs to be a lot more research in the way we can reduce the mass and volume of this sewage sludge. Environmental Advocates, as an organization, is working strongly in landfill space reduction, so how we can reduce the amount of plastics and cardboard and food waste that are going to landfills as well, because we know landfill space is a concern. But if we need to kind of shift things around to avoid the direct contamination of our water, then we have to pay billions of dollars to mitigate and to filter later on, we think there's a smarter way to handle our waste here.
But landfills are not perfect either. Anybody who's seen or smelled Seneca Meadows, as I have, knows that that is not a desirable environmental neighbor either. And so you kind of wonder where it's going to go. Yes, it would be nice to eliminate the source of this, the forever chemicals. That's not going to happen right away. Next question, and that is, is any of this regulation that you're thinking about or proposing possibly going to get overturned by an industrial-friendly Trump administration?
So thankfully, because the DEC is the one who regulates this process, we have control over our waste system at this level, at the statewide level. And so the current permitting is done by the DEC. We don't have any indication that the Trump administration is going to become excessively involved in this. We haven't seen that in Maine. They came out with a draft risk assessment of PFAS in biosolids in January, where they said actually the folks that are at most risk from this are farming families themselves who are in direct proximity, and those who live adjacent to farms that are applying this product. The House Appropriations Subcommittee of the Interior, that's a mouthful, proposed appropriations language last week that would say that no future EPA funding is allowed to be used to finalize the risk assessment or to implement or create regulations based off of the risk assessment. So we do see some, you know, industrial and corporate interests that want to continue making money off of sludge spreading, try to limit any possible action or publicity at the federal level. But as of now, because we regulate this process in New York State at a statewide level, we're not seeing any sort of jockeying in that way.
No preemption being planned by the federal authorities?
Not as of now in terms of interfering in the statewide level. I think they want us to start new pipelines and roll back our drinking water standards first.
Thank you.
I see Don Schuffler's hand online.
Yes. I'm all for preventing these PFAs from getting spread on the land. But before we reinvent the wheel, I think we need to maybe just tweak what we have. There was an attempt back in 1986 to import municipal sludge from Onondaga County into Tompkins County. And Resolution 297 opposing the importation of commercial residential sludge and solid waste, that's Tompkins County's rule. I know a resolution, the Town of Lansing has a law against it, and the Town of Groton has a 29-page law against spreading of sludge, and it goes into landfills and everything else. I believe all these need to be tweaked, but I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel to keep this out. We need to just add PFAs to them, and that would do it. And I'm willing to let anybody plagiarize this if you want. My wife spent a lot of time writing this, so to make her feel good.
Don, that's great to hear. Thanks for sharing that.
Joel?
You know, this has been a sore point with me for a long time. You know, in a reasonable world, we really ought to be able to close the loop in terms of our cycling of nutrients. You know, it doesn't make any sense to put fertilizers on the land to grow the food and then take the waste products and landfill them instead of recycling them back to the land. And I think it's outrageous that we have, as a society, have allowed industrial chemicals to so contaminate our waste that we can't reuse them beneficially. But it doesn't seem to be, I mean, there's something fundamentally wrong with the way we allow industries to contaminate our environment without holding them responsible for the consequences. But, you know, it's a political will kind of thing, and we have to be willing to hold them to account. And I just don't see that happening now. So we're in this situation of wasting what ought to be, you know, a beneficial product because of the context that allows us to take something which is, which should be beneficial and make it into something which is, in fact, harmful to the environment.
I totally agree, Joel. I will say, too, you know, in a bit of a bright spot, we were working on legislation this session. So as you guys know, the legislative session at the state level goes January to June. And we are working with Assemblymember Kellis of our lovely Ithaca in Tompkins County as the main sponsor in the Assembly, and Senator Pete Harkum, who's the Chair of the Environmental Conservation Committee in the Senate. And our legislation passed the state senate this session. It's very unusual for brand-new legislation to pass even one house in its first session. It generally takes three to four years, and there was a lot of coverage, especially of the contamination event in Albany County. So I do think it's something folks are paying a lot of attention to. There's momentum on. And, you know, most of you had heard of this issue before, but when I talk to folks who, this is brand-new to them, they say, "What the heck are we doing? That sounds ridiculous." So I do think it's something that intuitively makes sense, that this direct contamination is illogical. And I think there is momentum, too, at the statewide level that, you know, we at EANY, we're in a coalition with farmers and other environmentalists, public health advocates from across the state, and we're ready to, you know, go fight for more statewide action in January when session begins. But I do think this sort of action is especially powerful at the countywide level because of the control of the local watersheds and the municipal system. So one of the reasons I'm excited to talk to you folks today at the local level. Did you have another question?
What would you like our group, TCOG, or our component municipalities to do?
Yeah, I think, you know, it depends on your interest in the issue. It sounds like it might be something you guys are interested in working on, whether a resolution to encourage the county legislature to act. I'd be happy to take a help with the language and what that looks like. You know, we have lawyers on our team and have drafted up legislation for counties to look at. I'm not sure exactly how this process normally works for y'all, but happy to support wherever makes the most sense. And I think moving forward for a resolution to encourage the county to act would be a good next step if there's interest.
Yeah, I think there's interest in that, and aligns with what some of us were talking about earlier. And I think that's the role of a body like this, is to pass a resolution that we'd like the county to think about as well. And then that gets passed on to the state legislator. So Senator Webb and Assemblywoman Kellis knows that she's got support out here for her legislation. So I'd be happy to work with you and get some ideas. We don't have an ag subcommittee on TCOG, so I'd like to think about people who want to be involved in this to help draft the language. And if you're interested in this, maybe shoot me an email. And I'm talking about TCOG members, and we can put together a resolution and share that with our county counterparts. We've got a few months, because it's not going to happen this session. So if anything does happen, I mean, they may get called back to do an emergency session, but if anything's going to happen, it's going to happen next year.
Next year, yeah. Which makes local legislation and working this even more important right now as we wait for the state to get their act together.
I did notice that there was $500 million in the state budget for testing, water testing, drinking water testing, including PFAS. And I thought of you. I thought, man, I bet Environmental Advocates push for that.
We are, yeah. We do a lot of work on the QUIO grants especially. Did you have a question?
I just, I wanted to invite folks to the upcoming QUIO meeting, because one of our speakers is Global Aquatics Research, and they've been doing a lot of work locally on the Scanny Atlas and I think Cannon Dagewell, on the foams that come from habs. And then they've been discovering that the PFOS that are in the water are being concentrated in those foams. So they're going to share that work. They also have just released a new, just like the habs reporting databases, they've released a foam reporting tool. The other thing that we'll be talking about is trying to get, to adopt that orphaned part of the Seneca Canal. And because of that, we'll have the state representatives there or someone from their office. So it's a great opportunity to talk to some legislators and hear more about this PFOS issue and how it's affecting our water resources. So it's 8:27, August 27, 3 to 5, at Keogalake State Park. And there'll be snacks.
It's not a hybrid meeting, is it? It's in-person only?
It's in-person. We will probably offer a hybrid option, though.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Would you mind going one slide forward, Taylor, too? I just wanted to note my email here. If so, if anyone, I have cards for folks that are in-person, too, but if you have any questions tonight at 3:00 AM, you're wide awake and you're thinking about biosolids, hopefully not, that you can feel free to reach out to me with any sort of questions. And really excited to work together with you folks and put together some language and see what we can do here in Tompkins County.
You know, it does keep some of us up at night, but the thing is that the, you know, to get into the sewage sludge in the treatment plants, but not all the PFOS ends up in the sludge. A lot of it just still goes into the, you know, escapes and ends up in the lake. So this is a, it's becoming an issue for our drinking water as well.
Absolutely. And there's a bill at the statewide level called the PFAS Discharge Disclosure Bill, which is also an Assemblymember Kellis bill, just here as a part of the Kellis Fan Club by accident, that we work on really closely with my colleague who's focused on drinking water. But it's absolutely right, Joel, that, you know, these PFAS chemicals are in the sludge, they're in the effluent water that's discharged. And as of now, the Discharge Disclosure Act would measure and test discharge. So we don't even fully understand the full extent of the PFAS contamination coming from this effluent that we're permitted to, through speedies permits, to dump into our waterways. Caitlin, I see you have a hand up.
Yes, thank you. So Ulysses has a lot of active farmland. Where is ag and markets in the process of dealing with this? Because what I find in Ulysses is that we have many residents who are concerned about any number of things getting placed on fields and eventually making into the waterway. But what we run into is that ag and markets basically limits our ability to manage many, 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 many components of farming. So where are they in this conversation?
That's a great question. So this is an interesting intersection of the Department of Ag and Markets work and the Department of Environmental Conservation, because it's permitted by DEC and comes from that waste section. The bill that we're working on with Senator Harkum and with Assemblymember Kellis is focused on NCON law. The Ag and Markets Department, the Commissioner, Justin June, came out and said that he thought that this practice was confusing, it didn't make a lot of sense, and was something they were going to look into. They don't have a lot of public statements about it, but, you know, we spend millions of dollars a year to ensure farmland continues into the next generation, to protect farmland, to put land into agricultural easements. And this is a big priority for Ag and Markets. And so I think the toxic contamination of that land is something they're really concerned about. And while they haven't said anything super publicly, I think internally there's a lot of discussion about how this is balanced out with DEC and the governor's priorities and all that good work. In Maine, we saw some, you know, generational farms that are closed down. They're legally not allowed to produce food or any sort of crops anymore because the land is so deeply contaminated that anything grown there is toxic. And so we landapply less of our sewage sludge than Maine does. And they had some particular instances with their paper mills and pulp mills that added some additional PFAS. But if we're in a situation where the crisis is not as bad as in states where those farms had to be permanently closed down, we think that we should stop that before it happens, you know?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Caitlin. Great. Any other questions or thoughts? I really appreciate you having me here today and talking through this complicated and kind of scary issue, and look forward to working together.
Thank you, Claire. Thanks for coming.
Yeah. I'll hand out some cards, too, so everybody has my phone number and email.
Excellent.
Good, thanks.
All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is the subcommittees and their membership item. Not sure the origin of this one. Taylor, could you give us a little background on why this is on this? You wanted to explain a little bit about the need to track our meetings and to make sure we all know that these are open meetings. sure we all know that these are open meetings, that we need to allow anyone interested in to attend, and that we need to do a summary of what was discussed and keep some sort of minutes, not exact minutes. Could it be as, as good as the Zoom minutes that the AI assistant produces?
I have not had that approved yet, but I can ask Katrina about that.
Okay.
You pretty much hit it on the head. That's, that's perfect, yep.
I mean, those are auto-generated and then human-checked, you know, and by the committee, and that should be a way to keep a record of what we're doing.
Sure.
The question then becomes, how are these posted? How, how do we notify the public that the subcommittees are meeting?
Yeah, we have a TCOG website. We talked about it in an earlier meeting this year. They should all be submitted to any of the clerks of the legislature, and we can post them online.
All right. In the spirit of full transparency, which is what we're all about here. Any questions from the membership about this? Just to make sure that, you know, people know that the subcommittees are meeting when they meet and that there's some sort of record of what this was discussed. The, the recordings, do they need to be preserved as well? Please tell me no.
You know, not to my knowledge. I can confirm that information as well.
Okay, good.
So are we, so are we inviting the public to any subcommittee meetings? Is that the implication here?
I don't think it's a, we have to be inviting, but we have to post that on the TCOG website, the meeting times and a link to the meetings, correct?
I think just the meeting dates and times and the location.
Okay, and the location, all right. So if you're a chair of a subcommittee, get that information to Taylor as soon as she can.
So if you, if you're meeting by Zoom, the location would be the Zoom meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that then would need to be a link or just presumably?
Katrina will look into that.
Okay. For now, just make sure that, that they know when we're meeting, I think, and, and whether it's a hybrid or in-person or fully Zoom meeting.
Yes. Also being sure that membership is updated as well.
Okay.
And I think Bob wanted to take an opportunity to talk about committee makeup, subcommittee makeup.
Right. There's, there's, the Transportation Committee is a committee of one. It's been that way since it was formed back about three or four years ago. So it really doesn't have meetings. If there were multiple members of the Transportation Committee, it certainly could have meetings, and I would encourage that. But this was established a long time ago, and there's a part of me that says, maybe we should revisit the procedure that we set up three or four years ago, whereby we meet once every other month, and then supposedly, in the off-month, there's a meeting of the committee, the various committees. Because there has to be transparency, as was discussed here today, and there has to be full knowledge, and I think that every TCOG member should be allowed to, to at least sit in on such a committee meeting. And that isn't always the case. Transportation, I would welcome having additional people who wanted to volunteer for it or to take over that committee, because there might be committees that I would prefer to, to join, having chaired this Transportation Committee for now the past four years or so.
Yeah, well, I think you make a good point, and, and I think if the, the public and the other members of this group know when these meetings are occurring and how to attend, we might get more participation on even the Transportation Committee. But in your other point, I think we've already addressed, and any TCOG member can, can attend and, you know, as can the public, any of these meetings. Oh, I'm sorry, Rorden, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, is this a TCOG policy with respect to subcommittees posting meeting times and allowing them to be open to the public?
No, this is a county policy. I believe it's been shared to us from the clerk of the legislature.
So it's Tompkins County policy?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, so advisory subcommittees of any, of any public body, including municipalities, as long as they're purely advisory in nature, are not subject to open meetings law. That's ironclad, number one. Number two, specifically with respect to emergency planning and preparedness, we discuss a number of things at various times, which are not only non-public, they're non-foilable. So I think it could be problematic at times, not that I mind if members of the public show up virtually, but that is potential, or does potentially have a chilling effect on some of the topics of conversation that we discuss, particularly with reps from DOER. Not quite sure how to navigate all of that, particularly if the county itself has policy about public attendance at subcommittee meetings, but it's certainly not a function of open meetings law. I've investigated that thoroughly, including with village council, and that, that's very clear. So I just, I want to, I want to have a way to navigate that, particularly as we get deeper into conversations about EMS or, you know, law enforcement or those kinds of things in the future. We should, we should have some type of a plan of attack to how we're going to navigate that. If, you know, it's, it's not unreasonable to envision a situation where members of the public want to attend one of these meetings where topics would be discussed that cannot be disclosed to the public, and I'd like to know how to handle that ahead of time.
Perhaps that's an option for executive session within these meetings. Do you want to address this, Katrina?
Hi, Rorden, it's Katrina. We've had that come up here in the legislature, where there's been a topic for discussion that would impair public safety, which is the EMS and like the, any law enforcement discussions. And we do go into executive session in committees or at the full legislature. The idea of having the meetings posted on the TCOG website is more of a practice, and they are open to the public because it is a meeting of elected officials. And there are some other, some non-elected officials on some of these subcommittees. It's more of a practice for TCOG than a policy, than a county policy, because TCOG really isn't bound by county policies, as far as I'm aware. But executive session's always an option when it does involve public safety.
Okay.
I can also send out our little verbiage from our Rules of Order, which kind of lists out the reasons for public, for a committee to go into executive session.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm familiar with reasons to use executive session. I won't, I won't belabor this, you know, TCOG is, TCOG is not a, not an elected body in and of itself. So there's going to be a lot of portions of, I mean, I suppose if we had a TCOG committee where the members constitute as a forum of their own elected board, then we'd have a weird little situation where it's a public meeting, but these subcommittee meetings are not, not subject to open meetings law. So I just, I want to make sure that the executive, the executive session information will be helpful, because, because we're going to need to protect the ability of some of these committees to have some non-public information discussed.
Rorden, I think you bring up some good points, and, and I think we would like to, you know, be on the right side of this issue. I'm wondering if you'd be willing just to put together some bullet points that you could share at our next meeting to say, "Look, this is what we're required to do, this is what we're not pursuant to the open meetings law." And, and we want to make sure that our county supporters, you know, host here, recognize, you know, these points that we'll be following. I, I don't have any problem posting when we're going to meet and what our committees are, maybe even the name of the chair, if we want to do that. But whether they are, you know, something that the general public can, can come is something we've got to check out. I mean, when you do that, you can have, you can have things happen in a Zoom meeting, and I've had too many of those out in Dryden, where we get Zoom bombed and, and, you know, it destroys a meeting and leaves a bad, bad sense of, you know, humanity in the room. So let's, let's think about this. Would that be satisfactory to, to look at this between now and our next meeting before we establish what the, what our new operating guidelines will be?
Yeah, I'm finding whatever, whatever the group would like, I mean, I don't want to upset the apple cart. If the county would like us, if the county would like us to proceed with more openness than the law requires, I don't, I don't have a fundamental objection to that. If I put together bullet points, you know, they're going to come from information I have through the village, from, from, you all know Guy Coe, he's our village council, and it's, it's basically going to enumerate the fact that none of our subcommittees are open to the public. That's what it's going to come down to. So if we're effectively maintaining a practice out of an abundance of openness and a desire for public goodwill, that's perfectly fine. But if you want me to bullet point what open meetings law actually says, it's going to say the opposite of what our practice is. So again, I don't want to upset the apple cart. I'm fine with maintaining the practice as long as everyone is aware that we have a way to deny public access when we're discussing sensitive information.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're really hitting on something that I think is, it will be, it'll be a big trade-off, because I know at the, on the Emergency Preparedness Committee, we'll have practitioners come in from, from first responders, and they'll share stuff that they just won't share at an open meeting. I'm, I know that. And we will not get as much candid discussion going on. So there's a, there's a balance there. We're not legislating, we're not deciding on proposed, you know, legislation in our meetings. You have a comment?
I mean, I can, I can just reaffirm, I've, I've worked in the city group, looking at our advisory commissions, and, I mean, that, that analysis law is the same one that we operate under. Our, our advisory commissions do follow open meetings law, but that is our internal policy, they're not required to. The city just likes to do that.
Okay.
Bob? I would opt for transparency. I would opt for these committee meetings being open as often as they can be. There's another point I wanted to raise, and that is that I presume, I've always presumed, that the committees reported first to TCOG. And there has been one instance recently where a committee did not report to TCOG first, but reported to third-party agencies, units of county government. And it rather surprised me, and the committee did not misrepresent itself, but people on this committee of county government, I think, drew the inference that it was the entire membership of TCOG that was speaking and not just one committee. And that concerned me. And so it would be, I think, appropriate for these committees to report to TCOG first before going to a third-party agency.
Well, it'll come down to whether a committee member or an issue, two things, actually. A committee member may have a relationship or, or an issue that is between their municipality and the county, and therefore they're going to say, "Okay, well, this is, I'm wearing two hats here, so on behalf of my city, or my village, or my town, I'm going to speak to the county about this issue regardless of what TCOG thinks." So that, they have every right to do that, okay? The second issue may be the timing of the TCOG meetings doesn't match up with the need to get information to the county. So I don't know if, I hear what you're saying, that's why we have the subcommittee structure, but I think whenever our subcommittees want TCOG to act as a group, they certainly do report before, or need TCOG to act as a group, they certainly would. Mark?
I just will offer my clarification or view of that, Bob. I think, because we had a, a conversation about this, unless, correct me if I'm not speaking about the right thing, but I think you're speaking of the Department of Emergency Response's report to the safety, Public Safety Committee. So that, that was the work of the Department of Emergency Response presenting that information to, to that county committee. So, just to clarify.
Sometimes the committee, well, I think in that case, they contacted us and said, "Would you like to come say something? And what are we supposed to do?"
But when that, that report came to the Public Safety Committee of the county legislature, it was said it carried the support of the TCOG EMS Subcommittee. And I was not aware of that particular meeting where Department of Emergency Response came forward, did not attend that meeting, and it was a surprise to me when I walked into the Public Safety Committee that something was being said as though it, TCOG had endorsed it. And that was not technically accurate, and I think some legislators gained the wrong inference that it was only a committee report, a committee that I kind of wished I'd known about before I walked into the Public Safety Committee meeting.
Okay. Well, I think you make a point that when subcommittees represent themselves to other units of government, they should be clear that they are just speaking for their subcommittee and not the committee as a whole.
Yep.
Right. I'd like to comment.
Okay.
The, Rorden's understanding is my understanding. So I mean, I think the issue here is not us being required by open meetings law to, to have our subcommittee meetings be open to the public. It's a question of whether we want to comply with the, the spirit that motivated the open meetings law in the first place, which is that, you know, absent the legislative imperative, there's an awful tendency to, to, to do things quietly and behind the scenes, because it's, it's, it's less, it's more comfortable to do so than to have difficult conversations when the public is looking over your shoulder. But the basic principle is that the public has a right to know what the government is doing, and the transparency is a, is a virtue. And I subscribe to that and promote it. So I think it would be, it would be well for us to make it our policy, to, to have our meetings be open as, as, as much as possible. And this is an interesting development here, because, you know, neither TCOG nor its committees are subject to the open meetings laws, I understand it. So.
Correct.
But why not? You know, why not make it, why not make it easier for people to know what's going on? And if the county is willing to provide the support to, to make that publicity happen by having the, you know, the calendar, keeping the calendar and, and, and keeping a record of the, of a record of what has transpired at these meetings. So that's the other part of the question. Okay, we meet, we may or may not have notes, how's that, where's it going, where's it going that people can have access to it? That's part of the question that we need to think about in order to run this through to a, to a workable policy that, that, that we can easily subscribe to and feel good about.
I think we, we, we run the risk of over, overindulging in our influence, you know, or just an advisory group. We, we have real jobs in our municipalities, but this is a group that gets together to share what we're perceiving as challenges within our group and what we want perhaps elevate to another level of government, you know? So I guess we're, we're in this, you know, Neverland of government. Nobody elects me to serve on TCOG. I mean, my peers on the town board do, but, you know, on the ballot, that's not why I'm in office, to be on TCOG. I'm a town board member. So, you know, I, I hear what you're saying about open government, but I think this, this is something that could be perceived in some cases as going overboard, I'll just say it. But we can, we can try it, and we can try and integrate executive session in these meetings as we see fit. There, there may be days when there's a lot of that, or days when there's very little, depending on the committee and the topics at the, and guests that they've invited. Any other thoughts on this from our experienced group here? I know, I know there are others on this call that have struggled with this. Before we go back to you, Bob, any other thoughts?
When I saw this on the agenda, I thought perhaps it had to do with the, you know, what committees do we have? what committees do we have? And are those the right committees? And should we have other committees? Because that's a question we haven't asked in a long time.
Yeah. Well, I think that's a topic that we take up as we reorganize, right? In January? When do we do that?
January.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it would be, that seems appropriate. Yeah. I'll just mention, just, it's sort of an aside, but the way, you know, we, our emergency services Subcommittee has been operating as a working group. And one of the advantages of that is if, if, if we need to accommodate each other's schedules on short notice, we can do that, but, so.
Yeah, our meetings tend to get rescheduled on short notice quite often, and that could be frustrating.
Well, if you have a committee of two or one, you know, you can schedule with yourself pretty flexibly. So, you know, essentially, Bob would have to decide when he's going to talk to himself or think about something and put it on the calendar so others can watch him do it.
I think we better move on because it's 4:30 and we've got four more things to get to in terms of subcommittee reports. So let's, let's just put a pin in this because I don't think we can resolve all the questions that we have right now. Thank you, Katrina. So let's move on to our subcommittee reports. And the first up is, do we have somebody to speak on behalf of the Cyber Security and Municipal Information Technology Services?
Sure, I can. We did not meet in the last two months, so I don't have anything to report on that. But this is another one of those committees where I can see executive session. Like, it's hard to talk about any of the topics associated with what we deal with without exposing issues that relate to vulnerabilities. So I think that's another area where important work needs to happen, potentially where, although we didn't meet in the last two months, so you might also wonder about how important the work is, but, but it's a general topic, right? It's, it's a, it could be an issue. But I will give, I will defer my time to somebody else so we can move the meeting along.
Yeah, thanks. And thanks for sharing that. That's just another data point that we need to keep in mind if we're going to shift how we promote our, our subcommittee meetings. Mark?
Caitlin, I just, I just, this is a, um, this is on a different topic maybe in this bucket. I just wanted to mention it as something maybe for future TCOG discussion, but that's the, the county laser fiche technology. And I, it's a little bit of a mystery to me and I, but I know that the county has a grant for this. And so, yeah, I don't know. I just want to throw that out there for future discussion, not today, really.
Would you like that, Mark, at a TCOG meeting or at a committee level meeting that we invite you to?
Well, it came up in the supervisors' meeting and there was a suggestion that it might be a good TCOG discussion item, or it could be at the subcommittee level. Either way, I think. Do you have any thoughts about it?
Well, I, I mean, I have appreciated, I know there was a, well, I have appreciated that the, and I know that there are other municipalities that appreciate the fact that the county continues to provide access and that, that we are on various needs of dependency for laser fiche depending, I know Cuga Heights uses it for permitting. We use it for, in Ulysses, we use it for record management. So, Mark, why don't you and I, I wasn't able to attend the last supervisors' meeting because it was a conflicting meeting, but let's talk offline and we can see if it's, if it's better on the, the committee level or if it's, it rises to the full TCOG and we can come up with a recommendation. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks.
All right, thanks, Caitlin. Mark, you're next with the emergency planning and preparedness.
Great. Thanks, Dan. So, um, Dan sort of, Dan set the stage for the, the resolution that our Subcommittee is offering today. So it's a resolution recommending that the Tompkins County Department of Emergency Response proposal for expansion of the Rapid Medical Response Program. Whereas Tompkins County RMR program has been very effective in supporting our existing private and public first response agencies, decreasing the average response time by approximately half, enabling quicker medical care when matters matter and relieving the need for ambulance response when transport is not needed. And whereas the current RMR program does not operate overnight or on weekends, and whereas the Department of Emergency Response has identified that even with the current RMR program, ambulance availability is often stretched thin throughout the county. And whereas approximately 50% of RMR calls require paramedic level care, and whereas public sector and nonprofit ambulance services supported by municipalities provide an inequitable amount of mutual aid service that often leave their respective municipalities without an available ambulance. And whereas the current geographical variability in ambulance service and municipal support does not serve the county as a whole well and results in problematic disparities in emergency medical response and public financial support. And whereas the Tompkins County Department of Emergency Response has evaluated the current operation of emergency first response throughout Tompkins County and developed an enhanced RMR plan for bolstering ambulance service throughout the county. And whereas enhanced RMR plan, the enhanced RMR plan would provide 24/7 countywide EMS reinforcement, including additional ambulances. And whereas the Tompkins County Council of Governments Subcommittee on Emergency Response Planning has endorsed the plan, now therefore be it resolved that the county, Tompkins County Council of Governments hereby recommends to the Tompkins County Legislature adoption of and funding for an enhanced RMR program in the 2026 budget to bolster ambulance service throughout Tompkins County. And further be it resolved that TCOG recommends that Tompkins County immediately apply for a municipal certificate of need, CON, for Tompkins County to enable this plan to move forward.
Thanks. And that represents the work of members of the Subcommittee, Rorden Hart, myself, you, and some input from, from first responders that help us understand this issue. Rorden, do you want to add anything on this and why you, your message of support and take on this?
Excuse me, Dan. Has it been moved and seconded?
Oh, I move that we take this up for a vote and discussion.
Second.
Second?
Okay. Do we need a vote on that? No.
No, we can second it now we talk about it.
Sorry.
I'm getting in the queue to discuss.
It's late. Dan Klein, well, I just asked Rorden, but sure, you can go ahead since you raised your hand.
Thank you. So I, I think this resolution should be withdrawn. We are, there is, I predict there is zero chance the legislature will act on this resolution if it's passed by TCOG. For one thing, we have a study. We just paid for a study and the study's ongoing. So, you know, it would be illogical to take action before the study is done. Second of all, you heard our preliminary budget report that we have a potential $11 million deficit in our budget this year. You know, there might be, I can't say that there's no chance I would make, that this kind of thing will make it into our budget, but to ask at this stage of the budget process to ask the county legislature to endorse this, this project and to apply for a certificate of need, I just predict it will go absolutely nowhere. So that by TCOG voting on this resolution, you're just setting up a, a situation with the county legislature that is not going to accomplish anything except some bad feelings, I think.
Okay. Bob?
I would move that we postpone this resolution until our September meeting.
Point of information.
Tim, yes?
Yeah, Dan, could you just clarify whether there is currently a budget line in the proposed next year's budget for the RMR program as it now stands?
I guess I would ask Corso to speak to that.
So based on the information I have been provided, the RMR program was grant funded for two years, and we are going into the second year of that funding. So there is provisions in the budget to maintain what we are currently doing with the RMR program.
So yes, it's going to be there. And wasn't there an additional grant awarded by Anna Kellis in this current budget that she announced?
We have submitted a request to be considered for additional funding towards expansion of the service. And we are waiting for feedback from them to see if that will be considered.
Okay. And her budget summary document, she mentioned $300,000 for RMR in Tompkins County. Was that part of the grant, the two-year grant? Or was that new money, to your knowledge?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not fully aware of if that is a new money or, because we just actually received the disbursement agreement for the initial grant that was offered. That was approved for the county, for the start of the program itself. So we haven't actually received any reimbursement for the amount that has been spent on the project so far. So we are going to work with, we are now working in the process of submitting reimbursement for that. So I will look into that and find out if it's a new money or the same grant that was previously approved.
But to be clear, the RMR will be funded. What we're talking about is an enhanced RMR program that is under consideration. And, you know, there is a operational plan being developed right now by a consultant of what that would look, look like. I will not use the word study because we discussed this early in the year, we're no longer studying this issue. We know it's an issue. It's how to do it. And that's why our group figured, well, we know we have to do this. And we've been consistent throughout the year saying, let's fund this for 2026. I know decision could have been made earlier, but that's on the legislature, not us, because we've been 100% consistent saying, fund this for 2026. And sure, we could have passed this at our May meeting, but I don't think it, it's inconsistent to pass it now because the budget isn't complete. Whether it can get funded or not is, is not the question. We've been consistent saying it needs to be started as soon as possible because if you don't, the other communities will have to continue bearing the brunt. And you don't want to get me started on that spiel again, you've all heard it, about Hal Dryden is, you know, a donor and, and so are the other providers and municipal providers, so.
So I just want, sorry, I just want to add the information that, yeah, that $300,000 is not new money. It's the one that was previously approved.
It's the other, it's the other half of what was there.
And it's Leah Webb that did it, not Anna, just for the record.
Oh, right. Leah Webb?
Yes.
Yeah, I just read it in Anna's document, so I, I'm sure she's reported in the assembly version of the bill. Could we hear from Rorden, the other member of the EMS Committee?
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Um, I would just, I, I won't, I won't do what I normally do, which is take a really long time. I'll just say that my support for this resolution, and I think the purpose behind the resolution is, is at least twofold. I'm sensitive to what Dan Klein just said, and I know that, that Corso had emailed us with some concerns about how we would, how the legislature would make this work if they were to take it up. I'm actually not under any illusion that the legislature would necessarily be able to act on this. However, one of the purposes of TCOG, and a few years ago on another unrelated issue, I was reminded by Mike Lane, that TCOG was formed 21 years ago for the purpose of local municipalities being able to present our needs and wants to the legislature collectively. And what we have is a situation where emergency medical services, ambulance and EMS, as we've said over and over again, is in a precarious state and it is time for the county to do something about it. It is time for the county to treat this service the way it treats other emergency services. And quite frankly, and this is, again, not personal, Dan Klein, I personally would like to see county legislators go on record and say that ambulance service does not rise to the level of importance to be considered in the 2026 budget. If legislators feel that it is that important, as I hope many of you do, then it should be discussed and should be considered. EMS and ambulance is not a luxury item. EMS and ambulance is at least as important, maybe more important than other public safety departments. It is at least as important as issues to do with clean water, clean air, and clean food sources. And so this resolution is TCOG's way, should it pass, is TCOG's way of saying to the legislate, to the legislature, this is as important an issue as we have. And so please address it. And if it can't be addressed in 2026, that's, you know, then those are the realities and practicalities of spending public money. I get that. But it is not premature for TCOG to make this statement to the legislature, and it is certainly not premature for the legislature to, to continue down the road of taking action. Studies come, studies go, new recommendations can come and go. The legislature, future legislatures are not bound by decisions made by this one. Those things can be changed and amended as we go. But simply kicking the can down the road for yet another year, we had a fatality yesterday in the town of Ulysses. Fortunately, Trumisburg EMS was able to respond. It wouldn't have mattered had we not, unfortunately, in that situation. But Trumisburg EMS was in the city of Ithaca multiple times over the weekend, this past weekend. So this, this continues to, the issue continues to grow and not moderate. And so, so I think the postponing this resolution on the part, on the part of TCOG would be a mistake. And asking the legislature to give it the consideration it deserves is what the purpose of this resolution is.
Thanks, Rorden.
Caitlin has her hand up.
Point of information, did my resolution, my motion to postpone get a second? I didn't hear one.
No, I didn't. Okay. Are you?
I'm, I'd like to speak.
Oh, okay. All right. So that means we'll, we'll consider that motion next. All right. So yes.
I guess I'm, I'm just curious, does the postponement meet the, address the concerns that, that you have to, to Dan Klein?
Well, it does at least let the, the study of the solutions be completed. So yes, it certainly meets that requirement.
Were we to pass this or a very similar resolution in September, would it, would there be any chance realistically of 2026 money being put aside?
In my opinion, more realistic. It's still, you know, a lot of money, but at least the study would be done and perhaps TCOG itself would have a different conclusion based on the results of the study that you asked for. You know, I want to remind you, it was TCOG that asked for the study to be done. And so when the study's done, I assume you'll take the information and process it.
I'm going to take privileges, Chair. This study, if we're going to call it that, the plan, the plans that are being developed are akin to the fact that, you know, say you, you know you need a new car next year. You don't know what model it's going to be. You don't know the exact price, but you know you're going to need something to get that down payment on the car. We know we have to do something. The option of not doing something next year, sure, that might be option number four in the consultant's report, but that's there just as a default. You always have no option, no action as an alternative. The option of not doing something next year, um, sure, that might be option number four in, in the consultant's report, but that's there just as a default. You always have no option, no action as an alternative. But we're gonna, going to do something, or, you know, there, there's going to be a lot of tension in this county. I mean, there already is, but there's going to be more. So I, I think with so many experienced, exceptional legislators leaving this year, a vacuum being created in the next cycle. I think a positive message on this and maybe a certain amount of funding to kickstart whatever is recommended and settled on would be a very smart thing for the legislature to do, a very responsible thing to do. And that's, that's why I'm, I'm supporting this one hundred percent. Because I need the experience that's there here now to kind of say, this is really important to the new team that's coming on. That's, that's one reason why we need to pass this. The other is the CON can take a very, very long time. I've been part of that process. And you should start it now. And you should set that marker that we're serious by applying for a certificate of need with the New York State Department of Health. Um, I, I, I think that would show that the county is for real on this topic. And it would mean a lot to, to my constituents and the Dryden ambulance. You know, we're paying fifty dollars per property taxpayer in Dryden on average. Some pay multiple times that, some pay a little less. But every year, we're paying for Dryden ambulance. Most municipalities in this county don't do that. We need a better system and, and that, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, dunk on other municipalities, but it's just a patchwork system, and we can't keep doing it this way. So, you know, 2027 is, is a long time from now. And, and not, not, you know, something that this committee is prepared to settle for, you know, in terms of, you know, when are we going to start getting real about this topic? Because you'll be gone, and you've taken this seriously, and we really appreciate that. And so has Rich John, and, and so have a number, other, a number of other members, Greg Mezzi. Um, and Greg will still be around, that's great. Um, but there are going to be a lot of new faces. And I worry that the legacy of your work won't be as strong if, if we don't take this issue up and, and take it seriously.
Dan, you got two people with their hands up.
I'm sorry, okay, Caitlin.
Hi, yes, thank you. Um, I think the question of legacy and taking hard votes is the actual reason all of us got elected and that we elected legislators as well. And I understand that there are a lot of pressures on the county budget. There are a lot of pressures on the town of Ulysses budget. We're dealing with the fact that we are the largest provider of funding to the Truismberg Ambulance Company. And we were fortunate that Truismberg Ambulance was available to the accident that happened in the town of Ulysses yesterday. Fortunately, one of the two people in that vehicle was able to get like care and was able to get transport on a, on a rapid, on a rapid basis. But it's worth noting that the accident happened when the very important rabid response unit was not on duty, right? What would have happened and what couldn't happen and what frankly is happening countywide? When people need emergency care, and I know there are other townships who are having over twenty-minute waits for emergency care, I'd be hard pressed to think of a service that is more important to the people who live in Tompkins County than being able to call 911 and have an ambulance show up to help them. And while I understand that it's uncomfortable and it's going to be hard, and that conversation is not a conversation the county legislature wants to have, the burden is being pushed to those municipalities who have already opted in for service. And that's frankly unfair. Dryden bears, town of Dryden is bearing a harder percent, a higher percentage of individual or calls that are going outside their boundaries, but we're looking at twenty percent, fifteen to twenty percent that the town of Ulysses is subsidizing outside of our district. I want my neighbors in other townships to have access to services. And I, and I definitely appreciate, like I said, the, the budgetary impacts. But this issue is not going away, and the people needing service are not going away. And I would hope that as, even as our membership on TCOG changes, as it can with elections, that, that pressure on Tompkins County does not go away. Because the alternative is the town of Ulysses will not be able to continue to pay in for ambulance service. That's, that's a, that's a simple fact. We cannot deal with exponential costs year after year after year. Town of Dryden, I would imagine at some point will run into the exact same circumstances, although I certainly can't speak for them. My residents are proud, I hear it all the time, they are proud of the Truismberg Ambulance Company. They want to continue supporting it. But at some point, it becomes too expensive to subsidize everybody else. And I want everybody to get service, right? We, we, we don't, we don't want people to be cut off. But that being said, we know this will happen. We know it's necessary to fund, so start setting money aside for it. The county is setting aside money, I bet your cap, you have the capital reserve, I bet part of that money that you set aside for, in this current budget cycle, is going to the center of government. And I applaud the county on finally moving forward with the center of government. You need to start setting aside money for ultimately taking over ambulance service uh, payments and, and, and management to some degree as well. It's, I think it's an inevitability. And so even if you can't put a ton of money aside, even if you can't practically, you know, promise that you're going to create these new programs and expand and expand and expand, with all, with all due respect, like, the report is going to have options for how to do it. And every single one of them, except ignoring the issue, is going to cost money. So let's accept that and start chipping away at the future seed money for an ongoing program. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Dan, can I just procedurally, the motion on the table is the motion to postpone, so the discussion should be gathered around that.
It wasn't seconded though, was it?
It was.
It was, seconded by Dan.
Oh, it was. Then we need to go to that, to that motion and deal with it.
Okay.
Discussion of the subject.
Well, the motion to postpone, I think, takes precedence.
But I thought anytime you had a motion, you had a point you could discuss.
Yeah, if you're on point, the motion, then Mike, you're welcome to weigh in on whether we should postpone or not postpone.
My viewpoint is, we have to deal with it. Postponing it for one month, if it makes it nicer for the legislature, that's not the issue. The issue is for us to do our job, and our job is to get this out and have it discussed, have it be in this legislation budget. Whether they give it or not, it's the time to take the action. Postponing it doesn't change what we need, and if it makes it easier for them, that means it gets less attention. I think it should be today that we vote on it, not the postpone. My thoughts.
Thanks, Mike. All right, shall we call the question?
Are there any other comments on this?
Yeah, I just want to briefly say, what the, what the resolution you're voting on, we are voting on, calls for the county to apply for a certificate of need. That is not something we know yet that, that that's going to be the solution to the issues that you're all raising. We have this study going on, they're going to give us a menu of options. That may be one of the options, it may not be the option we choose. So if you wanted to remove that resolved and just say the county should set aside money for this, I might support that. But the certificate of need is a very specific ask that we don't have any data yet that that's the solution that we should choose.
You're correct that the final resolve presumes that the study will move the county in the direction of needing this. And um, I think that's widely accepted by many of us. But technically, you could say, you know, immediately applying for that, you know, may be something we'd want to think about. But Rorden, do you want to weigh in on that?
Just very briefly, with all due respect, Dan Klein, um, the subject matter experts on the Tompkins County's needs with respect to EMS are on the EMS Subcommittee and in your D O E R. And we have all agreed that it is in the county's best interest to apply for a CON, even if the CON does not then lead to ambulance service. The ability of a municipality to obtain a municipal CON is a process. It has its own procedures, it has its own um requirements. And with that comes some freedom and freeing up of personnel who are already employed by RMR that, that, that freedom doesn't currently exist because the county lacks a CO. So, so studies are great. Um, Tompkins County has a rich history of, of spending money on studies. And this is one particular issue where there is, um, though I'm interested to see what the consultant comes up with, there's actually far more expertise in-house than there is out of house. And those experts agree that a CON is useful. It doesn't, doesn't commit the county to a course of action.
That's true.
But it is a, it's a useful tool, and that's why that clause is in the resolution. And I would oppose its removal from the resolution.
All right, again, we're getting away from the motion that's on the floor right now.
Exactly.
All right, let's vote, let's vote on the motion to dis-
Dan, I would suggest a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion to postpone? So if you're in favor of postponing this, that's your motion, Mr. Lynch, raise your hand, please. All set? If you're opposed, if you are opposed to postponing and want to take this up today, um, raise your hand, please. All right, motion fails. You good? All right. So moving back to the resolution at hand and taking into consideration where we were with this conversation about the CON, does anyone want to weigh in on that last resolve, anyone else? I do want to emphasize then on behalf of myself that what Rorden said is indeed correct. And again, my experience is these things can take a long time, and it does not necessarily commit the county to any one thing by starting the application process.
Yes, I think Gordon raised his hand first.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Rorden.
Just one very, one final comment, I wanted to piggyback on what Caitlin was saying. One of the reasons it's so important for the county legislature to tackle this issue head on is because there is no chance, I'll say that partially tongue-in-cheek, there is no chance that the village of Truismberg would allow Ulysses to leave. What we would do instead is stop responding outside of district. If costs escalate to the point where Ulysses or frankly our other contractees, town of Pulver, town of Hector, said, we are not receiving a response from your ambulance timely because you are providing too much mutual aid to the South, we would have to stop providing that mutual aid to the South for the benefit of those municipalities that are paying us for the service. And I can't speak for the town of Dryden, but I, I believe that eventually um, that would have to be something that, that folks on that side of the lake would have to consider. I don't want to see that happen. I don't want to see that mutual aid framework break. I don't want to be in a situation where someone in the city of Ithaca or the town of Ithaca doesn't get an ambulance because we don't respond and then that person dies. However, I also don't want to be in a position where a village of Truismberg or town of Ulysses or town of Pulver or town of Hector resident doesn't get an ambulance because we are providing mutual aid somewhere else. That's why it's so important for the county to tackle this issue head on sooner rather than later.
Well, I will piggyback on that comment. I spoke with Jason Leifer earlier today, and yes, it's something we grapple with almost every day. We discussed it. We discussed the need to um, um, reduce Dryden ambulance's footprint. Um, and it's a, it's a gut-wrenching thing to discuss because we don't like the idea of doing that. Um, but we're overextended, and it's not fair, it's not, you know, straight with our taxpayers to do this continuously, year in, year out, while things are studied. Um, another year's study is not what we're interested in.
Except that you voted for it. TCOG authorized the study, remember?
It's not a study. TCOG authorized the study?
Requested it.
We requested it.
Yeah.
We requested an-
It's just funny to me that you, now you're saying, oh, we can't, and Rorden is saying it too, you can't wait for the study.
But you know what?
You're the one that requested it, so.
We didn't set the timeline, though. I wanted this started back in May and to be done by August. And the timeline was set by the county, not by TCOG. And, and that immediately made me worried when, when I learned when the study would be completed. Yes.
I would say that the Department of Emergency Response proposal that we encountered here at Public Safety Committee meeting back in May and has been put before us here for today's meeting is really not ripe. Um, I think it's trying to do things by half measures. And what I think what we're hearing from municipal representatives is, in the long run, what we need is nothing short of a Tompkins County ambulance service. And this is not it. This is purchasing maybe three ambulances. As I understand it, they would not be advanced life support ambulances like Banks has. They would be transport ambulances. And they would be kind of putting a blowout patch on a worn tire. And it seems to me we need something bigger. But if we get something bigger, there's something we need that we're probably not going to have next year. And that is a countywide ambulance tax that everybody pays based on value of property countywide. And I don't think there's time to do that. I think that's probably the only solution. What concerns me about this resolution is it says we asked the county legislature to support adoption and funding of an enhanced RMR program. It doesn't say funding how. It could be through a complicated system of cost sharing. And that could cripple some of the smaller towns' budgets. And that's one of the things I'm concerned about. I don't think from what we're hearing from the administrator today that we're going to get full county funding of what amounts to a three million dollar program when you add RMR together with the enhanced RMR. So I can't support this resolution today. I'd like to see what the Center for Governmental Research comes out with in September. I agree with legislator chair, um, his, Dan Klein's uh, idea that we should wait. And we should see what that plan comes out with. It might surprise us. It will be that the, the D O E R proposal will be given serious consideration in the Center for Governmental Research report. And I'd like to see what that comes up with come September or November. I might have a much different opinion on it than I do today. But I really don't think the proposal is ripe yet, and I can't support it.
Okay. Yes. I just, I want to say, I do completely agree with the, the sentiment behind this. And I appreciate the, the challenge that, that some of our municipalities are under. We, we all, in our own ways, I think, pay for more than what we, I don't know, what, what only clearly benefits our constituents. Uh, one of my colleagues on Common Council has a habit of bringing up every single way that city of Ithaca taxpayers are supporting anywhere else in our county in a negative way. Uh, I do not, I do not believe in that perspective. Um, but I appreciate that this is a struggle. Um, and I tend to, on a, on a personal level, believe that we should consolidate a lot of what our municipalities are doing that benefits the whole county, under the county. That, that makes sense to me structurally. Um, what I'm hearing in this discussion is we have a need, but if we push forward in, I don't know, a certain degree of frustration that that needs not being met, I'm, I'm concerned that it might undercut how, how actually deep the need is and the county's ability to, to push for it in a holistic way rather than trying to patch it short. to, to push for it in a holistic way rather than trying to patch it short-term. If, if that's making any sense, and I, I'd love to hear if I'm completely barking up the wrong tree here. Additionally, like, if we, if we move forward with this, I'm, I'm hoping I can count on all of your support, or whoever's representing the city here in the future can count on all your support, when we're looking at stuff that the city is paying for that benefits this entire county and beyond.
It's a fair point. Thank you for making that. I just want to clarify, the, the, the report from Dewar had several options. They did not have just one option. And what we're talking about with this is to set some money in a reserve fund so something can be done. It's not as descriptive as, as you might think at this point. Or what we're saying is, you know, don't miss an entire funding cycle. And, and the results, and I've said this already, but I mean, we will not be able to do anything pending the results of the work of C G R if there aren't any reserve funds that are set aside to, to start implementing. And that's the concern there, as again, on the C O N, so many counties already have them in New York State. There are 15 counties with C O Ns right now and another five applying this year. It's, it's not uncommon for a county to have a C O N or this sort of thing.
Dan, you got two hands up.
Okay, Mike Murphy, thank you.
The point of the motion today is to force them to talk about it. It's a recommendation. They don't have to vote what we ask. They don't have to do anything. We just want to force them to discuss what needs to be done as opposed to putting it in the back burner. And the, even if they vote on it, they still have, the legislator would still, if they went with that, they still have some flexibility. So, it's not, we're telling them exactly what to do. What we're saying to them, this is critical to all the municipalities in the Tompkins County. And we want it to be one of the forefront things you talk about while you're doing your budget. Maybe you're going to say, "We can't do it this year." Fine. But to wait until the budget is pretty much done and then say, "Well, can we squeeze some money out?" That's not the point. It's, it's so important. It should be upfront. And it's just a recommendation. We're not making the decision for them. And I don't know why we're worried about waiting a month to make a recommendation that we think something has to be done. And you don't have to accept what we're suggesting to the legislature. So, I'm for voting for it today.
Good. Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Don Scheffler, I see that your hand's up.
Yeah, I agree with Mike. And remember, we can, we can ask them to, to budget for this. But if it doesn't work out, if, if things change, they don't have to spend the money. That's something that they have to remember, that they can put it in reserve and, and do what's right when what's right turns up. But to do nothing is, isn't going to get us anywhere.
Do you have a comment, Mark?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a, a comment. So, thank everybody for their comments. I appreciate that. I just want to point out the, the plan that was developed by, you know, Mike and Joe at D O E R was done with the data, looking at the data of what's happened with the current RMR program, which, which has been effective. And they evaluated deficiencies. It's not 24/7. And with their backgrounds and expertise, developed what they felt were effective ways to, to bolster ambulance response in the county. And I want to emphasize that, that bolstering, as the RMR program is done, will, will, will reinforce ambulance service across the county for municipalities that do and don't have their own ambulance I want to point out, I do with much appreciation, that the county has been really supportive of our, our past recommendations. And I really appreciate that. And I, I do think this resolution is timely. And, you know, now's the time to, to let our legislators know our concern. And our, I, I think they understand it. But I think, I think we all feel that. And, and it's, it's time now to, to let them know. And I, I, I know that you mentioned earlier, Dan, I can't remember the language exactly, you concern about hard feelings or something like that. I, I certainly hope that's not the case. I, I hope they can take this as an expression of something that we thinks of, of vital importance. And we're, we're letting them know that. So, I just wanted to make the, those few points before, before we vote. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to weigh on this? I know it's getting late. This has been a great discussion. And I think we've all...
I just want to just say that this is my sixth month of being here. And I think this is one of the organizations all of you can be very proud of in the work that you do. A part of the conversation, I believe, someone mentioned forcing the legislatures to take it up. I think it becomes a challenging word to use in terms of building consensus around programs. When the resolution to conduct the implementation plan and funding mechanism came to the table for this C G R plan development, it was unanimously supported by the legislatures. As part of the conversation, there is consensus around the fact that this is essential service. It is important for the county to come up with a plan. I believe, I believe if there's a plan, if it's on the legislature table tomorrow, that answers the questions that lingers in all of our minds, it will pass. So, it's from my experience within the last six months, this is not a project that will fail. The legislatures that we have, they will support, and they have voiced support for expanding their services. And I believe if we proceed on the notion of building consensus and working together, we'll have a success, greater chance of success than staging a case for a contention. I believe there's room for engagement, planning together, developing the process. And also, I just want to say, working on the first budget in this county, I am seeing a lot of one-year funded items in our budget. There are specific projects that should not be funded a year. We are, if you're adopting this plan, if you're adopting a plan, this is a plan in perpetuity until it pretty fails. So that we commit to fund it for its lifetime and sustain it and build upon it. So, if there's a commitment to fund it in 2026, is there going to be a commitment to fund it 2027? Because it's not worth funding something of this magnitude for a year. It's a commitment that has to be established, that this is the way you're going. And we put it as part of our programs. And create a funding mechanism to sustain the program. Because from where I've worked before, this is a cost driver. It's not a revenue generation initiative. The best you could do is a tad of your expenses from, from billing. So, we need to commit to fund it all the way to whatever years to come and improve upon it. Because the cost is going to grow, the billing expense continues to grow in many municipalities. So, we should not just focus on 2026, but we should focus on long-term sustainable model that will stay the course of time. So that we can all plan and make sure that we have in place funding mechanism that will make it sustained and also build the program to be efficient and effective. And that will require significant amount of planning, not just starting something to see if it will work.
Well, I think we, we hear you're saying, we've just been at this so long, we're skeptical. And that, that level of planning will occur with this new lot of legislators that are coming in. We're grateful for the support that we've got with this current group. I think this could be, as I said earlier, a legacy issue for so many departing legislators, saying, "We put our market down. We believe in this program. We want to add it as a line in the budget." And you know, in government, if you've got something in, it's hard to remove it, for better or for worse. But I think getting this in is something that this legislature believes in, sets a precedence for more enabling of the program in future, future years. So, I just think we're, if we just look at it that way, as, as, as a membership, most of the, most of us, and I understand you as, as somebody who has to build the budget, you know, you, you have a different take. And we respect that. But again, I think we're getting close to when we need to call the question. Did you have one more?
I mean, look, if, if that really is the goal, what I've, what I've heard is, we have either consensus or near consensus if we strike the last resolved. But if, if the, if the full-
Will we get a vote if we strike the last resolve? I don't know. I don't think, will that make you vote for it, Dan Klein?
I'm not sure. I have a little trouble answering under pressure here. I'm reading the remaining resolve again.
Because if, if we are trying to push this in that way, I think it coming from TCOG unanimously would make a difference.
Yes, I would vote for it.
In, in that case, I would like to move to strike the last resolved.
We would need a second?
Okay.
And we would vote on the amendment?
All right. So, there's a motion to strike the last resolve. Do we have anyone who wants to comment on that?
It was seconded.
It's been seconded.
No guarantee that if we pass it, he will sign.
Yeah. I think these are things that we want the county to emphasize and the county legislators to know that our priorities for TCOG, whether they apply for a C O N is going to be up for them. But I, I don't think our, our, for most of us, our priorities on, on going ahead and starting the process, to me, they're, they're inseparable. You know, you, you need the C O N to have an expanded ambulance service. And, and so, you know, they're, they go together. And if you believe in one, you believe in the other, kind of.
I mean, if they are so inextricable and, and then I guess I don't see the harm in removing that from our written recommendation, especially if, like, if that's the, the thing is, if, if this is perceived as premature, which is what I'm hearing it's being perceived as because of the ongoing not a study study. If something like that was brought for council, and I, I, you know, we, we all experience this at times. I, I know we would just, as a unit, table it until we had our not a study, study done. I don't know if that's what the legislature will do. But I'm concerned that that might be the case, in which case we, we, if the real goal here is that we want to get this in now, and we want to get legislators signed on now and get a, a budget item marked now, I'm worried that this might actually not achieve our goal.
Okay.
Am I making sense?
You're, you're, I think you're saying it might distract from the, the primary goal of this.
Yeah.
Anyone want to speak to that, Rorden?
Yeah, actually, that makes a lot of sense. So, the C O N is actually operational, not, not, not conceptual or budgetary. So, I'll, I'll remove my previously stated objection for committing magnetism. I won't oppose the removal of that last resolve if that will advance this resolution. Because I, I think that the key is that the legislature needs to tackle head-on with funding, the 2026 can, some, some conceptual growth of EMS first response service. Whether or not that includes a C O N may not be relevant at this moment. I haven't double-checked with D O H. I'm actually not sure the legislature is required to approve the application of a C O N. It may be an administrative function of D O E R. So, us as TCOG insisting that it be done, probably not as relevant to the conversation as I had initially indicated.
All right. I think we know the, the room on this. And all those in favor of removing the last resolve, raise your hand. Sufficient number having raised their hand, the motion carries. All right.
Was that unanimous?
No.
You need to ask if there are any objections?
Any oppositions? Anyone opposed to it? Yes, it was unanimous.
Okay.
Are we ready to call the question?
So, we're now voting on the resolution excluding the last resolved statement?
Correct.
Right.
All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Nice to know abstain.
Oh, any abstentions? Thanks, Joel. All right. Do we have any, we have one more committee report, I believe, or is it two? Okay, we've got energy. Is Rod still with us? We might have lost Rod Howe.
Does not look like it.
Okay. And transportation, Bob?
I have a report. It's many paragraphs long. I will send a copy of this to the clerk and she can distribute it to members. The highlight is that Tompkins Consolidated Area Transit announced on July 16th, the arrival of five new diesel buses. And they are, they were transported in June and are now placed in service. A fifth Gillig diesel bus remains at the manufacturer's plant in California, is expected to be driven to TCAC in a month or so. And with that announcement, TCAT also reported that TCAT's six new battery electric buses, also made by the same manufacturer, Gillig, have recently rolled off the company's west coast production line and could start arriving in Ithaca as soon as the professional drivers get here. And they could be put in service by the end of summer.
Wow. That's great. Love TCAT. All right. If you have an agenda item for the next meeting, you can announce it now or send it to me and Taylor. So, we, we know it in advance. I'll be looking for another person like Claire Winslet, who visited with us earlier, because I thought that was a fairly informational thing to bring to this sort of group. And-
Yeah, that was great.
Winsler. All right. Without further ado, I think we should adjourn. Thanks, everyone, for staying late. I know this is getting into the evening. And I got a planning board meeting to get to. Starts in a half hour. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.